Heather, do you want to mention the streaming for the proceeding tonight?
Certainly. So I've been informed that this is the first meeting of the City Planning Commission that is being livestreamed, so if you are coming to speak, please talk into the microphone so that it can pick up all of the sound and we can hear everyone clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. And the one item of business we have before our public hearings this evening is action on the minutes of our last meeting from late August. Is there a motion from one of the commission members to approve those minutes?
I'm going to approve the minutes from the last meeting of August 17th.
Second?
27th.
Sorry, August 27th, 2018.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Our minutes are approved. We will move to our public hearing schedule for this evening. Just by way of background for those who are not familiar with the process, as the each application is announced from the podium, we will ask the applicant or the representative to come forward, provide their name and address for the record, as well as a brief summary of the proposal. And following that presentation and any questions from the commission members, we will invite members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application to come forward to do so, also providing their name and address for the record and their comments. And then we will extend an invitation to those members of the public who might want to speak in opposition to the application to the podium, providing their name, address, and comments for the record. So with that, by way of background, Heather, would you introduce our first application this evening?
Yes, thank you, commission members. Mr. Kulik, tonight's first public hearing is SP 9613 M1. This is a continuation from August 27th of 2018. It's a special permit modification to a restaurant to modify the site plan, floor plan, elevations, and signage at 1524 and 1530 South Salina Street. Weinholdt's Living Trust is the owner and KBP Investment is the applicant. The proposal lies within a business Class A zoning district.
Thank you. If the applicant is here, please come forward.
My name is Carlos Sobrin with LIS Architecture. I reside at 104 East Orlando Street, Orlando, Florida, 32804. I'm here on behalf of KBP Investments and their interests. I believe I was I'm in relief of the gentleman who was here last time, so I'm not sure exactly all of the information that was discussed, but as I understand, the signage was a point of contention. One of the things we did there is we've reduced the signage to three signs, which we believe basically match what is existing. As you can see, we have a new paint scheme on the building and we're keeping signs on the same section part of the building. There's two signs that face, I guess that would be adjacent or north of the South Salina Street, and then one sign that faces Salina Street. I will point them out if I would.
You can disengage the mic if you want to come around and...
So these are the two signs that match the other two signs. Here's the existing photograph of the building. So what we have is we're replacing the Colonel's mug with a KFC letter set and we replaced the KFC letter set here at this section of the building with a painted sign here. Do you want me to speak into my microphone? Yes. Excuse me. So as I said before, we're replacing the Colonel's mug with the KFC letter set and then a stencil on the side of the building to replace the KFC letter set over here. And then on the other side of the building that faces Salina Street, we're replacing the Colonel's mug with the like. The rest is a paint scheme that KFC has been using on all their national restaurants. This here shows all the three different signs, the Colonel's mug, which is on a metal piece that would be attached to the front of this facade, the KFC letter set, which will be here on the other side of this tower element, and then the stencil, which is on the side here, excuse me, over here on the side of the building. So the overall intent was to match what we have existing, so that we're not asking for additional signage, just basically what we have there before in a different design. If there was any other items that we needed to discuss, I think there was an issue with the fencing. There is fencing. There's a six-foot fence that is on the backside of the building, along the back there, and this back, this portion that provides a barrier between the business and the residents behind the restaurant, which I think that was another point of contention between from our last meeting. Did I do this correctly? Yeah.
You completed your presentation.
That was mine.
Okay. Fine. Thank you. See if there are questions from the commission members?
There are. Okay.
You can go first.
Okay. Just to clarify, because you're talking about keeping the signage that's already on the building, changing the paint scheme, we have questions about the way the signs exist now, because with the literature we have from the staff tells us there was a sign waiver granted. You're saying you want to keep the signs. In some place in this documentation, it says there are three signs that you want. You're taking the picture of the Colonel off the building and you're going to put the KFC letters in a different place, but are you proposing three signs or six signs?
No, it would be we're not, we're trying to maintain the same number of signs, but we're replacing the three signs with three new signs.
Okay. So three existing signs will be covered over with new signs?
Correct, or replaced.
Replaced. Now where are the other three? In your count, I'd just like to know where the other three signs are going.
All right. So this is the existing building, so you can see where the signage is. There's two signs on the tower, the same corner tower that we're keeping, which would be this side of the tower is where the KFC is. So basically, we're replacing the Colonel's mug with this KFC letter set. Then over here, I don't know if you can see this, but there's a KFC letter set along the center portion of the building. We're replacing that with the stencil. And then on the other side of this tower, where this Colonel mug is, we're replacing it with this Colonel mug. The square footage of the signages are as follows. Thirty-one square feet for the Colonel mug. I believe, let me just check my notes here. And then the 36 square feet for the stencil and 21 square feet for the KFC letter set.
Okay. So both sides of the tower, signs one and two, Colonel mug and the new KFC. Further back in the building, another stencil.
Correct.
Okay. And then the ground sign is two-sided. Is that right?
The round sign?
The existing sign that has the pillars, the ground.
Oh, the ground sign. The ground sign, yes, that would remain.
Can I answer my question about numbers?
Before you move on, because I'm still confused. So according to the chart that we have in our report, our staff report, which I believe is page four, page four, there are a total of, under SP 9613, there were seven wall signs. Then the next column, it says six wall signs. Then the third column, no wall signs, and under this application, three. So are we talking about, how many wall signs are we going to have when we're all done? Just three? So all the others are going away? So we're, and right now there are six? That's the most recent approval?
Yes. What is shown in your chart is what the planning commission has approved over the years.
Okay.
And the last column is what's being proposed.
So if we were to...
And the...
So if we were to count up all the signs on this photograph, there should be only six that were approved. We approved six, that's hopefully what we would see, but we're talking about wall signs, but we're talking about going from six wall signs down to three.
Correct.
But we're also talking about going from 80.8 square feet for those six wall signs to...
144.92 square feet for the three wall signs.
Quite a bit more. Yes. So almost three times more.
Well, I'm...
In terms of square footage.
I can't, I...
I think you'll just have to clarify, because 31, 36, and 21 equals 88.
Right.
So if what was submitted is 144.92, then that is inconsistent with what you just presented.
I apologize. When, was that the original submittal?
The clarification submittal.
The clarification submittal came up with?
Yes. So, and that speaks to my concern. So you're requesting fewer wall signs, but based on the numbers we were given in terms of square footage, those are going to be substantially larger than any one wall sign that's on the building right now. And then it appears the ground sign stays the same, the menu sign stays the same, and the awning and the window signs are going away.
Right.
Okay. So we need a clarification then of the three, what is the total square footage for the three wall signs? We have 144.9, basically 145 square feet for three wall signs.
Yeah, well, I, we can provide cut sheets for that. I mean, we've got the cut sheets right here on the board, or I can send it.
We've got those in your application on pages...
Twenty-one is it?
Twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, it looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe a point of confusion, I don't know, but the sign for the Colonel's profile, the Office of Zoning Administration is counting the red and white striped background.
Okay, that might be the case, then. That would be an eight by 10 feet, so I can do a quick calculation, but that's probably what's throwing that off, I mean, or making the difference.
But your staff report has the three signs that he is presenting with the dimensions that I measured from the application. The bottom line is there will be three wall signs and one ground sign. The ground sign will be double-sided.
But that's it, it's, there's no change in square footage for that one?
Correct, except for the reader board portion, they're changing the...
The copy?
Copy of that.
So...
But the size is the same.
So if we look at page, I think it's 22 or 23, the one with the Colonel's face, it looks like the face dimensions are roughly seven and a half by four feet, but when you come, when you include the stripes, it's basically double that. It goes to eight, well, eight in terms of width, not quite in terms of height, so proportionally it's a little off because of the vertical dimension. That clarifies for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Any additional questions? Be on the signage or no?
No.
No, okay.
Do you have additional questions?
I'm good. Yep.
Thank you very much. That's end of our questions. We'll ask the public if they'd like to comment on this. So first of all, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium and provide your comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and your comments.
Question for Chowski, Executive Director of Syracuse United Neighbors, 1540 South Salina Street, next door neighbor to Kentucky Fried Chicken. So not only am I the executive director, son, who's been around 40 years fighting for the neighborhoods on the southwest side, I spend my time, the first thing I do in the morning, is take my yellow bucket and my tongs, go around, pick up trash. I spend three to 10 minutes a day. Lot of these are trash from the customers at KFC, particular wrappers from straws all the way down to chicken wings, you know, after the birds nibble on the meat. So I mow the grass, and you got to pick up the trash before you mow the grass, and in the winter months, I shovel the snow, and our sidewalk adjoins KFC. So if you're going to piss me off, then you're going to get me to come to the hearing. So our organization, who owns the property next door to the applicants, Syracuse United Neighbors at 1540 South Salina, is here again to oppose the application for the same reason we did back in 2012, where there's a letter in the file that I saw the other day, that I addressed to Mike Bulba, Director of Code Enforcement, about the stockade fence that was installed and not maintained by the applicant. So I got to come back every time you show up. It don't get your attention. Maybe this time I will. Approximately two months ago, the fence was pushed over onto our property and to date has not been repaired. I talked with the shift manager twice. Since no action was taken, I filed a complaint, Code Enforcement Director Kent Housley on September 11th, and as of today, no repairs have been made. The fence is leaning over. You know who picks up that fence and leaning on the fence, on the rest that's standing up? I do. On March 15, 2018, following a snowstorm, KFC private plow operator pushed their snow onto our sidewalk. I believe in making sure that the people that walk up and down Salina Street, particularly go downtown, should have a thorough fair clean of snow. So as it is, your private snow guy took the snow and pushed it right up against my side. So I've been down this road before, and as I got smarter with this new administration taking more action, I contacted the police. Police issued, and I'm told I have it in writing in this packet that I'll give you, that the proprietor or the owner of the snow plow operation got ticketed. A year prior, I had the same problem. I didn't push for a ticket. Son wants this fence repaired, a new section that was damaged about a year ago repaired. You know, if you're not going to give me a nice fence, I'm going to fight for it, and I'm going to do it right here. And, and, you know, I'm tired of complaining to you guys. I'm tired of complaining to Kent Housley. It could take a long time. Can you give me a name and number so I could call somebody directly? I don't deal with the employees of KFC. They're, the only thing they know how to do is dish out the chicken. So no to this application. Any questions?
Questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other individuals who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Any other speakers in opposition to the application? And if not, then we'll extend an opportunity to the applicant if you would to address any of the comments made in opposition. Sir, do you wish to take advantage of that opportunity?
Hello, it's Carlos Sobrin, 104 East Orlando Street. I apologize, sir, good sir. I'm an architect consultant, and I will make sure that I talk to the owner and, you know, KBP has an owner-operator to make sure we can resolve some of his issues. I was unaware of that on end. I'll make sure that I will speak to the gentleman afterwards and get his information from him.
Thank you very much. Question for staff? Otherwise, the application is complete?
I have silver clock meeting.
Okay, so in that case, we'll declare the hearing closed and move to our next hearing.
The next public hearing is R 1835. This is also a continuation from August 6th and August 27th. This is a re-subdivision to combine two properties into one new lot at 415 and 417 Merriman Avenue. Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation is the owner and applicant, and both properties lie within a residential Class AA zoning district.
Thank you. The applicant is here. There you are.
I'm here today. Terry Luckett, Greater Syracuse Land Bank at 431 East Fayette Street. 417 Merriman Ave. is a vacant two-family house, which was sold to the land bank in December of 2015. The property is currently for sale. There's tarvia at the rear of the building that will accommodate four to five cars. There's little or no green space. The vacant lot at 415 Merriman Street was acquired from the City of Syracuse in January 2016. While the lot is buildable, no potential purchaser has come forward with a proposal for new construction and is not likely to do so in the foreseeable future. This re-subdivision will provide the potential purchaser of the two-family home at 417 with defensible space and the opportunity to install fencing for additional yard or recreation space for the tenants. It will increase the value of the property and help stabilize property values in the The new owner of the entire subdivided lot will assume responsibility for property maintenance. They will pay taxes. It will enhance the land bank's probability of selling the house to an investor who will renovate the property and bring it back into productive use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the commission regarding the application? No? Thank you. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward. No additional speakers. We'll declare the hearing closed and move to our next application.
The next public hearing is R 1837, also a continuation from August 6th and August 27th. This is also a re-subdivision to combine two properties into one new lot at 223 and 303 Gertrude Street. The Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation is the owner and applicant, and these properties both lie within a residential Class B zoning district.
Terry Luckett again, Greater Syracuse Land Bank at 431 East Fayette Street. 233 Gertrude Street is a vacant lot acquired in April 2014. It's buildable. It's 50 by 165 feet. 303 Gertrude is a vacant lot acquired in April of 2014. It's non-buildable, only 25 feet wide, 165 feet deep. Our strategy is to combine both lots to create one 75-foot building lot for infill construction. Per the county planning, the new address will be 301 Gertrude Street. Once the properties will be combined, it'll be listed as a buildable lot for new infill construction in this Holly Green neighborhood. We actually, I don't know if you've been out there, it's a difficult lot, it's, but it is the Holly Green neighborhood, which is desirable, and we have actually had someone inquiring about the property who does new construction.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. So no additional speakers. We'll declare this hearing closed and move to our next application.
The next public hearing is R 1839. This is a re-subdivision to combine two properties into one new lot at 321 and 323 South Salina Street. 321 South Salina Street LLC is the owner and applicant, and both of these properties lie within a central business district retail zoning district.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ryan Benz. I'm with 321 South Salina Street LLC. My address is 247 West Fayette Street, third floor. I'm one of the members and owners of the two assets. We're currently under construction to develop the Whitney Lofts project on South Salina Street, across the street from the Landmark Theater. Both of these buildings we acquired over the last 16 months, and originally was our intent to keep these buildings separate. While under construction, we did receive a state variance approval to keep them separate. Unfortunately, that variance then required about $300,000 in additional construction to keep them separate, and, well, you know, that was a bit outside of the budget to do so. As such, we're approaching today to formally merge these buildings into one asset to relieve ourselves of the additional construction requirements that the state variance put in place.
It's the sum total for the purpose of the application?
I'm sorry?
It's the total purpose for the application?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have, we've worked very closely with Kent Housley, the City Codes Department, on this project already. We are currently under construction, currently with two separate building permits, so we'll, doing this will allow us to go back to one building permit and alleviate those additional restrictions by then alleviating specifically, there's smoke purge requirements, smoke baffle requirements, just some, two separate sprinkler systems, so a whole host of additional requirements that just cost are preventative to keep them separate.
Thank you for that summary. Are there questions from the commission members? Thank you. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Are there individuals who would like to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium. We have no further speakers on this application, so we'll declare the hearing closed and move to our next hearing.
The next public hearing is R 1842. This is a re-subdivision to combine three properties into two new lots at 341, 347, and 353 Mosley Drive. The Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation, Jeffrey L. Young Jr. and Daniel T. Haran Jr. are the owners and applicants, and all of these properties lie within a residential Class A1 zoning district.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Wandershey. I'm with the Northeast Holly Development Association at 101 Gertrude, and this application for the re-subdivision to divide three properties situated at 343, 347, and 353 Mosley Drive. It's a vacant lot, 347 is a vacant lot, and it's proposed to be split among its two adjacent neighbors at 343 and 353, and both neighbors have proposed this. The vacant lot has 55 feet of frontage, and they'd be split in half, 27.5 each, for each adjacent neighboring property, creating two 82.5 feet lots. The lot's been vacant since 2012, and the topography of the lot's a challenge, as it increases in height approximately 10 to 12 feet from the front of the property to the rear, making it difficult to build. It also helps to serve the Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation's mission to re-subdivide these lots and avoid a future recapture. Over time, vacant lots have a tendency to face neglect due to death or financial crisis, and having the lot resubsidized, re-subdivided, this potential is avoided altogether. and having the lot resubsidized, re-subdivided, this potential is avoided altogether.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the applicant? Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No further speakers. We'll declare the hearing closed and move to our next hearing.
The next public hearing is R eighteen forty-three, a re-subdivision. This is to combine three properties into one new lot at twelve oh two and twelve hundred and a half Willis Avenue, and also nine fifty-nine Emerson Avenue. Basma Musharbosh is the owner and applicant, and all of the properties lie within an industrial Class A zoning district.
Thank you, Heather. If the applicant is here? Please come to the podium.
My name is Joe Mastriani, Mastriani Engineering, representing the applicant. As Heather said, there are three lots here. There's a small one, narrow one up in front here. There's a somewhat large one here, these two are on to Willis Ave., and the third lot has a building on it, which technically is the address from Emerson. The building that's here, my client is looking to develop a small neighborhood grocery store there, wouldn't be any change to building footprint or anything else, but the major part of the parking would be over onto this parcel over here. To do so, without having to incur a lot of parking requirements as far as landscaping and everything, we have to put it back into one parcel overall. So that's our proposal, is to put everything here into just one overall parcel.
So, you're finished?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't want to interrupt your presentation, but if you are finished, let me just pause a minute before you leave the podium to see if there are questions from the commission members regarding the application. Okay, thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward to the podium, provide your name and address and your comments, please.
How you doing? My name is Chad Ryan, I live at five oh seven Emerson Ave. I'm here in my capacity as the second district counselor. I have great concerns about this property moving forward. I'm not here to speak on the subdivision because there's not much I can say about that, but I did want to be public in my efforts that I'm concerned of the operation going forward with this project. I'm also concerned with the efforts to circumvent a project site review. There have been property modifications such as painting and lot modifications, both of which they were advised they would need a project site review. They did not pull permits for either of those. This seems to be the behavior to try to circumvent as many rules as they can, and so if that's any indication of how they're going to run their business and how they're going to treat the neighborhood, I'm opposed to this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward and again, provide your name and address and then your comments.
My name is Janet Boucher, and I'm at nine twenty-nine Emerson Ave. Okay, I've been a resident there for twenty-one years. I've lived in the neighborhood my whole life. I grew up on Tip Hill. Our area is very quiet, it's a very quiet neighborhood. Our kids are very safe there. It's like a little community. The kids play amongst each other, you know, they're at the houses across the street, they're at the houses next door. We've tried to keep our streets safe. Our noise level is great, I mean, at ten o'clock, there's no noise. You know, it's very, very family-oriented. Everybody's considerate in the traffic. There's no music, no really loud music going on, you don't hear racing cars. I mean, it's so quiet that I can hear the firehouse, the fire trucks before they hit Genesee Street on Erie Boulevard, you know. Our kids don't have backyards to play in, most of them, you know, so they are at the front. We've had a lot of problems lately with the fair going on and the amphitheater, the traffic being backed up so bad across the street, but they're flying down the street. You know, I was out tucking the neighborhoods the other day, people just flying by. I mean, it's thirty miles an hour, there's a sign up there that says, "Watch for children", nothing. I'm afraid it's going to bring much more traffic to our area. It's going to bring people walking through our backyards at night. I go out late at night, I get home late at night, you know, I don't want to be walking, having somebody in my yard. We have dogs, people walk their animals. I don't want people coming down in my yard, walking through my yard because of it. Hold on, I'm just trying to read my notes. Our safety for our kids, in my opinion, is most important. My child grew up on that street, we never had a problem, but we do seem to be having a lot of high traffic come through, and I think that this is going to bring much more traffic. And if they're going to be using nine fifty-nine at all, that's bringing it right down onto our street. We have children there that are, we have children with disabilities on our street, we have autistic children, we have some children that are not verbal. Now, they're out, and we have all these people. I don't know if you guys know about Greenfront, I grew up with Greenfront. Lately, when they closed down, it was many drugs, gangs out in front of them, it was constant, all the loitering out there, selling drugs. We have two other convenience stores, Munchies, where Munchies was is now Q's Market. Then we have Salisbury Super Saver, not even a block away from that, both on Milton Ave. And then they want to put one, Kitty Corner, they want to put the Greenfront. So do we need three convenience stores? Do we need, I mean, at Munchies, you could walk in there and they were hanging out outside asking you to buy drugs. Now, do you want to, I wouldn't want to send my kid up there by himself, I don't, my kid doesn't go there. Parking's already a problem on our street, so if we're going to be bringing more parking down and they're going to go on Emerson Ave., they're parking on both sides of the street, the plows aren't getting through. People aren't able to get to their jobs. Emergency vehicles can't get through sometimes. We've also had police officers, fire trucks coming down our street that have hit vehicles. You know, they're coming a little too fast, and they don't have their sirens on. We don't need any type of thing to influence our children, you know, kids are very impressionable, and we don't need violence, we don't need gangs, we don't need drugs coming on our streets. We've never had this problem in all the years that I've lived there. Also, like I said, the two convenience stores, the problem with Munchies, Greenfront has always been that way, and I just would like you to consider that what you're going to bring to this neighborhood and that high, more traffic, it's going to make it unsafe for our kids to be outside. I don't, the neighborhood's not going to be what it is, and it's a very nice, close knit neighborhood, you know, and I'm looking to stay in the area for the rest of my life, but if this continues, I'm not going to keep my family there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there other individuals who would like to speak in opposition to this application? If so, please come to the podium.
My name is Pearl Baldwin, and I own the property at nine four nine Emerson Ave. I'm in agreement with Janet. We've been a good neighborhood for a while, we have lots of children, we all stick together and help each other to watch out for our children. I am in fear of the part of the building being extended over to Emerson Ave. Like she said, there are lots of children running up and down the streets, and our street is sort of small, the way it cuts off from the other Emerson Ave., and it like curves up and curves over. I can barely get through there myself sometime with other cars parked on both sides of the street. It's very dangerous on that street. You can't see yourself, the other cars, when you're coming in to that, that street. I have an autistic grandson who is non-verbal, limited mental capacity, no sense of danger, and I'm afraid that this store, I don't know what type of store it really is going to be, but if it's going to be something that's going to bring traffic over, I am in fear of that because he, he's antisocial, he's non-verbal, the neighbors know him and they help me with him, and we try to give him an opportunity to help him ride his bike on the little street. It's like therapy for him, and it's very scary to think that there are going to be strangers hanging around right next door to me in that area with my autistic grandson that I've raised from birth, who lives with me. So I don't know what's going to become of our nice little quiet neighborhood, and I'm in fear of that, especially for my, my poor, non-verbal autistic grandson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other individuals who may wish to speak in opposition to the application? If there are such individuals, please come forward and provide your comments after providing your name and address.
Hello. I just want to say that I'm very against this, the last thing we need-
Your name and address, please.
Steven Perez, nine fifty-four Emerson Ave. I live right across the street from the backside of that building. I'm already picking up garbage out in the front of my house, in the front of my business, I have a business around the corner, and it's all come from the stores that are already there. If there's another store there, it's just going to make that problem even worse. And like I said, there is two stores there, and everybody knows what that brings to the neighborhoods, and I'm definitely against this.
Thank you very much. Are there additional individuals who may wish to speak in opposition to the application?
Good evening. My name is Christine Varga. I am an owner of five houses on the nine hundred block of Emerson Ave. You can see we have quite a crew here, and those aren't all my, my houses. Some of the people here are independent homeowners and residents who have concerns about this project taking place. Mr. Ryan's comments, I thought, were quite telling because I was concerned when I went to the premises and I saw that the front of it was already green. And as Ms. Boucher indicated, the old Greenfront Market had quite a reputation. Why would we want to resurrect that now? To restore that negative reputation and bring in more people to the area? The presentation that was given on this matter was very brief, and I did not understand what the plans were for the nine fifty-nine Emerson Avenue lot with regard to that area that's really bringing more of traffic and difficulties to that part of our, our street. I, I didn't realize we were going to have an ability to put up a board like this, but I have some photographs and some items that I would like to share with you. But I do have some, some very grave concerns with regard to this. I, I'm going to apologize too, because I'm not as well-prepared as I would have liked to have been. We received the notice of hearing on the twelfth, I believe, the eleventh or the twelfth of September, and it was certainly less than one week. It did not provide enough time to promote as much information and to be able to get all that we needed to be fully prepared for this hearing. Now, because of the short time, though, a number of people in the neighborhood went out and they spoke to residents, they, they obtained signatures of people who were opposed to this, to having another convenience store in the neighborhood. And I would like to, if I may, approach you with, with the petitions.
Certainly. And this is a copy we can keep and add to the record? Okay, thank you.
With respect to the petitions, I did not review them, I just compiled everything into the folder, and I just put it in kind of by date because a number of people were out there on the street. So you can see that there's a lot of neighborhood concern about this project. Does this neighborhood need a resurrected Greenfront Market? I submit it does not. Why does he need to combine all these properties? What's the reason? I don't understand what the Emerson Ave. part of it is and what he plans to do with that. But certainly, it's right on the fringe of residential areas, and I will show you some photographs so that you can see that it does impact on the residences. I did make a FOIL request to get information regarding the applicant's prior markets. I believe, I was advised that he had owned Munchies that's been closed down, as well as the Greenfront that was closed down. I did receive some information that I wasn't able to print up because it came just before I arrived here on my cellphone with regard to some of the code violations that were present at the old Greenfront that led to its being closed down with electrical issues and things of that nature. And that is something that is a very serious concern because these properties are so close to one another. Mr. Ryan showed you, or spoke about the fact that he's already painted it. If I might approach you with the photographs-
Certainly.
Since I don't have anything large enough to put up there, but the, the one at the top is the old Greenfront now. I admittedly, these are all recent photographs. And then at the bottom is the new Greenfront, it's already painted. And I would just say for the doctor, it's a hideous green color. The old one is the one at the top, and then the bottom is the new one. His, his property's already painted green. So that's on the corner of Avery. Right, Avery. Yeah, okay. Mr. Ryan expressed concern that they've already begun the paint job and some of the other work that has not received a permit, which would suggest that this individual is not necessarily going to be receptive to the processes of the city. I would ask that if this body is going to seriously consider this application, that there should be some further studying done with traffic patterns, traffic studies, and things of that nature in order to determine that this is not going to destroy the neighborhood. There are a number of businesses planted throughout this area, but they are all nine-to-five type businesses. They're gone in the evening. We don't have any kind of store of this nature on Emerson Ave. that's bringing in people until all hours of the day and night. We, we need to know more about the type of business he really expects to promote here. I have some concerns. When you look at the paint job there, it's very, very sloppy. I have some other photographs of, they may be on the back of that, with regard to, oh, on this photograph, this series of photographs, just shows you the nature of the paint job. I have two sides to, I hope that's okay. Some of the photographs, I think, might help to assist you, and I've got some, they kind of show the location better as well, because that map, or whatever you want to call it, it doesn't really show you what, what the neighborhood is like and where this is located with respect to the other properties. On the back of the first one, that had the new and the old Greenfront, I believe, I, I included pictures- pictures of the proposed lot. So, I think it's, yes, this is the proposed lot. This is the Emerson Ave, and this is the 2,000, I'm sorry, 12,000 in the ave, the rebuilding and the lot next to it, Emerson Ave. And then this photo, this series of photos at the bottom, I think, particularly helpful to you because they're going to show you how close these properties are. The, this one in particular shows the 959, and then the close proximity to the houses at 957. Now, 957 Emerson Ave is this property right here. And it's particularly interesting because it's, the lot is, I believe, one of the front houses on the lot is 30 by 70, and then there's a house behind it on the lot that's 30 by 50. So the house behind it hits up almost the entire lot. So you can see the proximity of these houses is so close that if there were to be a fire, it would be a great concern and certainly a very frightening situation. And this house here is my house, 955 Emerson. It's a three-family house. And my particular concern is if there's a fire, these houses are going down. Tenants particularly on the upper floors are really in jeopardy.
Either, yeah, just so that your comments project, so either from the podium, if that's more convenient, or as a couple of previous speakers have done, disengage it if you need to move her around, okay?
So anyway, I'm expressing concerns here because of the potential for, if there's a fire. There's certainly safety issues with regard to this, just the immediate safety of the people. And it doesn't hit, it doesn't even go towards some of the other issues that have already been expressed. So I hope that these photographs are somewhat helpful to you. Can I just turn that over to the secretary? So you get some perspective on what this area is like. These two series of photographs are, it's hard to get everything, but anyway, you can see the green front here. And then the K and C Auto Service Center. And then over here is the K and C Auto Service Center with Milton Ave. So Milton Ave and Willis Ave kind of converge, and then KC Auto is in like an island in between the two. And if you look, and I'll show you some other photographs too, but if you look with the KC Auto here, the Salve Super Saver is right here. And down the street is Munchies, or what used to be Munchies, it's now the Q's Deli Mart. Okay, so you get some idea of what, you know, is there a need for a third convenience Oh, there's another thing I wanted to point out. On his map here, when you look at it, and it shows the distances, this is 2.7 feet. Now, I know on, these houses were zoned years ago. And now, the requirement is, I believe, four feet from the property line. So it really does demonstrate how close these properties are. And that's of great, grave concern. Another thing, if, I wasn't able to get a picture because I didn't want to trespass on anybody's land, but there's a stairway up in here that people cut through to go, from Emerson to go over to Willis and Milton. It's going to be a place to really facilitate people hanging out. And our properties down here are going to be very vulnerable, as you know, the type of people that convenience stores attract. A lot of loitering and littering and other types of activity that we're all familiar with. And so it's just going to bring more people down here. And Mr. Perez was talking about his picking up garbage. If we have a store up here, it's going to be even worse because they're going to be bringing the stuff right through to Emerson Ave. In his application, the applicant answered no to the question, "Will a proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present levels?" I don't know how he arrived at that conclusion, but if he's putting in a parking lot and planning to create the store that they seem to indicate they want to do, there is definitely going to be some kind of impact on the traffic in the area. On Willis Ave, that portion of Willis is pretty quiet. There's not a lot there. Milton has a little bit more, but a lot of them on Milton actually turn and go onto Erie Boulevard and sometimes go back towards the fairgrounds on State Fair, towards State Fair Boulevard. So that little portion of Willis is pretty quiet, which makes the houses on Emerson very much safer and not as exposed to a lot of noise and traffic and that sort of thing. Additionally, with this type of store, it's going, not only is it going to bring in customer traffic, but how is the product going to be provided to the store by delivery trucks? I'm not sure where the delivery trucks are going to go. Are they going to be in the front of the store? Are they going to be in the Emerson Ave side, or what? But that's a real concern, especially because on Emerson, I was told by one of the parents the other day, there are at least three children on three different school buses each morning and each afternoon. We have delivery trucks coming in and out. That's going to be problematic. Cars have some difficulty getting onto Erie Boulevard now from Emerson Ave, but then when we have to compete with delivery trucks coming in and out of this new Greenfront, I submit that's going to create a very significant change in the traffic patterns in that area. Just, and perhaps I should, you don't want to hear something personal, but Emerson Ave does, has some commercial businesses and such. And several years ago, one of the trucks delivering something to one of the businesses came down the street, and it tore down the power line to one of my houses. And nobody got the name of the truck or anything like that, so I had to pay for it. And it was a significant amount of money. If we had more trucks and different sizes and things like that, they could create the same kind of difficulty for other people. It was certainly an inconvenience for my tenants, and it was an expense for me that I had to absorb. And again, I'm urging you to consider some kind of traffic study if you're seriously considering this application, because we need to know how this is going to impact If I might approach you again, I've got another photograph.
Sure.
This is really from, on Milton Ave, across the street from the proposed Greenfront. But you can see, here's the Salve Super Saver, and if you could look down here, you can see the Q's Market. So that's the proximity to this. And then on the back, I took a picture of the Greenfront from the parking lot of the Salve Super Saver. So you get an idea of, you know, how close. Do we really need another market within a block's distance? There's always already been some discussion about the applicant's prior stores and the green, the prior Greenfront. But I just want to make one more comment. This horrible shady green that the building has already been painted is already an eyesore. And the poor quality of the work, just, this is not going to enhance this neighborhood at all. This is a working, middle-class neighborhood. People work hard. They work hard on their houses. And they don't need this sort of thing to take place there. I would submit also that this is really going to change the character of the neighborhood. I've taken some pictures of Emerson Ave. The front is looking down towards where they would ultimately be. It's from the end. There's a business up here that's open, you hardly ever see anybody there. But you can see, it's a tree-lined street. It's not, it's a nice neighborhood. There are good people living there, working hard. And then on the back, I did farther down the street, and then this is a photograph here from the end going down. It's just across the street from where they want to, where they're proposing the integration of 959 Emerson with this Super Saver. One thing I want to emphasize is, this whole project is really on the border of a residential area. And we need to maintain it. We need to maintain the quality of life for the people who live in this city. Am I not doing it right? Your decision in this manner will lead to either the preservation of the neighborhood or, I submit, and I think the people who have joined me this evening will join in that, the destruction of this neighborhood. There's nothing positive to be gained to this neighborhood by putting in another Greenfront We can't allow the resurrection of the Greenfront to move the problems that the old Greenfront had to another location. That's not the purpose of the city of Syracuse. The city is trying, I would assume, trying to get more residents here. On behalf of the people who signed the petition and the individuals who joined me here this evening, I want to thank you for your attention, and I'm asking you to please deny this application.
Thank you for your comments and the material that you provided. Are there additional individuals who might wish to speak in opposition to the current application?
I'd like to speak a little bit.
Please come to the podium, provide your name and address, and then your comments.
My name's Henry Purcell, and I live on 4956 Wingate Road in Liverpool, New York. I used to live in 955 upstairs. I work for Christine. I do some of her houses, and we keep them in nice shape. And there's a lot, there's a little bit, with the fairs on, there's a lot of traffic around here right now. If this market comes in, there's going to be, that's going to be a little more traffic. And the trash around there is pretty bad, so it will even be worse if they bring this market in there. I know it will. And if we're having free markets in an area that's small, I don't think we need it. And that's what I wanted to tell you.
Thank you very much. Other individuals who may wish to speak in opposition to the application, please come to the podium if you have comments to make. Last call for anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. And seeing no additional speakers, we will return to the applicant and offer you the opportunity to address any of these comments that were made in opposition.
There's quite a few comments. I'll try to keep this brief. To start with, the one thing that comes out among, I'd say, half of the comments, this is not facing onto Emerson Ave. There's no entrance onto Emerson Ave. There's going to be no deliveries from Emerson Ave. A lot of the comments are that you're going to have delivery trucks. One comment was about extending the building out towards Emerson. The building footprint is not changing at all. So it's, a lot of the stuff was of people on Emerson Ave. This is only accessed from Willis Ave. This is, this property is already zoned for this use. We're not looking for a zone change or anything else. So it's zoned. So my client has the right to put a store there, okay? And you also have the right to have competition in the area. I can see why the other two stores, one, a third store in there, and maybe the people, I don't know. As far as the comments about, we're trying to bypass everything. We've been working, I've been working on this project as the engineer since April, of going through stuff with the city. Brian Thompson's been reviewing the building plans. I've been dealing with Heather. We've had a few meetings, things like that. So we're not trying to bypass anything. I've known on at least two occasions, there has been a zoning official, he gets called down for a complaint. He comes in the building, and actually, the owner's right here, he can verify that. And he's like, "Well, I was told you're doing this, this, and this," and those things were not being done. Somebody just blows it up, and he says, "Who was it from?" He goes to the store straight across the street. So I mean, there's false, false claims being put in there. Being an engineer, when I go down, I look at what this client needs, what his restrictions are and everything. I've noticed the other buildings are not meeting the court requirements. Bless you. It's hard to keep that in when it comes up. They don't, the other buildings do not. And I brought that up to the city, and I'm speaking just on my part and on behalf of the client. I brought that up, and the response was, "Well, somehow that slipped through, but hopefully we get that correct in the future." So the other stores are allowed to bypass things, and they've clearly bypassed things. Yet, we get false accusations and things coming down to try to stop my client from doing things. As far as the operation, he's going to be doing basically a, like I said, a neighborhood store. Probably 85% of his business is going to be people walking in from the area. Nobody's going to come driving in from Camillus to go to the store. And there's a lot of other things around there. If you notice the store right across the street, it might be the Super Saver. They've got a parking lot that might hold about, say, 12 or 15 cars. Anytime I'm in the area, I'll look over there. He's got three or four cars. A lot of his is foot traffic also. We're looking at the same thing. So looking to say, okay, you need a traffic study done. If they want one done, that can be done, but I've done these long enough. You're not going to have, over here, we're going to have about six parking spaces. We're not looking to have multitudinous traffic coming in from, you know, other neighborhoods to do anything. There's not going to be, we're not putting in an application or request or anything for any kind of hot food to be served or anything like that. So as far as saying there's going to be a bunch of garbage because of the store and the people leaving, unless they rip something over and they're eating it, it's not they're going to be eating a piece of pizza and throw the dish down or anything. And the owner would be required, and he'd be responsible to clean the thing up and keep it up. I think there was a lot of comment made also about what this is going to turn into. You know it's going to turn into, there's going to be drugs there, there's going to be people loitering. Well, nobody knows what's going to happen anywhere. You can't really say that, and that's when he would be given a violation if something like that was being done. On the map here, we're talking about the closeness of the properties. This house right here, at 457, if you look at the survey map, and this was done by Lear, so he's a licensed surveyor, this building actually encroaches onto my client's property. He's fine with that. He doesn't want to do anything about it, but technically, that's even onto his property. So that's illegal right there. The building is a cinder block building. God forbid there's some kind of fire, but if there was, cinder blocks are going to contain much more than these wood structures here. So even inferring that there's almost definitely going to be a fire here, it's going to burn everybody else down, I think is ludicrous and not really realistic. But that's basically, you know, what I want to comment on, based on what I've heard from the other people. So we're not, once again, we're not doing anything on Emerson. Deliveries would be in here. There is a roll-up door, and everything's going to go through that area there from the trucks. It's not a huge store. There is not going to be any access from back here up into the store. They're going to have to come into the main door up there to get in. And that's basically it. So that's what I'd like to offer with that.
Okay, thank you very much for those additional comments in response to the earlier comments from the public.
Just one thought, based on what was said. It looks like there's a question of whether a project site review is needed, and given that, I think, would that question open, as well as some of the additional facts that you may want more information on, it might be advisable to hold the hearing open.
Exactly what I was- Exactly what I was thinking. And with the concurrence of my colleagues, it looks like they're in agreement, we will do just that, and that is, hold this hearing open. And then we will now move to our next hearing. Thank you all who spoke.
Next public hearing is SP 0522M1. This is a special permit modification for a restaurant, and this is to modify the floor plan and signage, and in addition, establish live entertainment at 439 to 441, 443 to 447, and 449 Burnett Avenue. New Burnett LLC is the owner. James Leon Jr. and Julie Briggs are the applicants. And the properties lie within a business Class A zoning district.
Thank you. If the representatives for this application are here, great.
Hi, I'm Julie Briggs. I reside at 208 Pec Avenue in Syracuse. I am one of the owners of the Listening Room at 443, the business owner, this is Michael Leon, who resides at 443 Burnett Ave. He is the prop, one of the property owners. We are planning on opening up the Listening Room at 443, which is a cafe and lounge. Our focus is on live acoustic music, special ticketed events. We'll offer...
Just a moment, please. As folks are leaving the room, if you could keep your comments low, because we have another presentation underway. Maybe pause for just a moment here. Okay, great. We want to hear what you have to say, and it's hard, a couple of conversations going on.
The Listening Room at 443 is a cafe and lounge. Our focus is on live acoustic music, special ticketed events, and creative classes. We will offer coffee and tea products. We'll have a full bar and a limited food menu, due to the fact that there's no kitchen on the property. Michael's here to answer any questions in regards to the property itself. I can respond to any questions about the business plan.
Did you want to make a statement or any...
Sure, okay. Do you need me to state myself for the record? Okay, so, Michael Leon, owner of New Burnett LLC, I live at 443 Burnett Ave, apartment one. So this is my building, this is my home. I'm gracious enough to have my sister-in-law, my brother, running the, the business downstairs. Julie has been in the promotions business for, for a number of years. She's very well-known in the musician community, very respected individual. My brother, who is a, he works for Verizon here in town. This is something for Julie to, to run and make a go of it, and we're supporting her a hundred percent. So my, what I'd like to add, the area really needs this kind of business. There's not a coffee house in our neighborhood, we're constantly asked to have that. Julie's vision of having the acoustic acts come into the, the neighborhood is very welcomed. We are not a bar, although we do serve alcohol. The idea is to provide a space for musicians from outside the area to come in and have, just have a presentations. And we're also gonna open up for community space. The idea is to have it so that we can even have receptions, people can rent the room out at any time. So it's, again, we're respectable, are respectable people. We're not a convenience store. We don't wish to disrupt the neighborhood at all. We like to get along. As, as many people have spoke, I pick up the litter in my neighborhood quite a bit. I'm not in favor of Julie's hideous green paint that she has on the building right now. I had to throw that in there, sorry. But, yeah, so hopefully that we can go through this as speedily as possible, and if there's anything else we can do to help with that process, we'll help you do so. Thank you.
Great, thank you. One topic maybe you could explain for us a little bit is the parking situation. There was, in some previous iteration of the business that was there, there was some reference to some thirty-some spots, off-street parking, that went with that business. It seems as though those same spots, wherever they are, and could you tell us where they are? And then, do they or do they not align with the project that you are proposing?
So are, is everyone on the board familiar with the property? Right? The formerly known as, right, yes, OPL, I'm glad you have your phone available for that. The OPL, O'Leary's, that was owned by Mr. Hornstein. The parking, that's there, it's available, if need be. There is an open lot. As you see the property, it is a freestanding, three-story brick structure. It's a large rectangle that sits on an even larger rectangle, which is the parking lot, which surrounds it on all sides. Noting the, the neighborhood, there is the train station that provides ample parking on that side of the street. Next door to us, we have Bon-Ton Glass, and then Freight and Lock, which are businesses that operate only during the day. So at nighttime, when we do have larger events, there's, again, ample parking. Speaking to Mr. Hornstein recently, who operated that venue with considerable traffic through his doors, he said that that was one of the main selling points of the property, was the fact that there was so many, so much parking that's available. I'm very good friends with David Reel, who owns the train station. We have had discussions that the parking is available in the evening hours, when he is not occupying the space at all. So that the idea that we have to do anything above and beyond to accommodate the parking, if need be, we will, but I would like to keep the parking, the lot, which is 449 Burnett Ave, separate from the Listening Room at 443 Burnett Ave.
It's possible that the parking arrangements might need to be formalized, and I'll defer to staff on that, in terms of any sort of agreement, if the, if the capacity is under a different ownership.
Can you just explain what you said again, that you, you'd like to keep it separate?
I would like to.
What does that mean?
So the, the lot is gated, and that lot, I use it for my own personal purposes, as my backyard and my patio area. Myself and my tenants who rent an apartment on the second floor, I live on the third, that is our private parking lot. I would like to keep that as such, so that we can enjoy the space and have some privacy from the business that's downstairs. I mean, I do know, I understand the nature of the business, right? It's a mixed-use commercial property. I brought the property for this sole purpose, to eventually have something like what Julie's proposing downstairs. But I do not see how there's a need to add the parking behind the building for the business that's occupying downstairs. Just like Gilfoils that operates their bar a few doors down, or the former Sparky Town Restaurant on the corner of, of Almond, Catherine, excuse me, Catherine and Burnett, there's no parking there. So where we're located on the block, there's not, more than enough street parking to accommodate.
The proposal requires thirty-nine off-street parking spaces.
The proposal does require, and that is because why?
It's one space for every thirty square feet of customer area.
So the fact that the building is on this lot, that's a different address, that then has to be applied to this building?
I'm saying that this proposal requires thirty-nine off-street parking spaces.
Off, off-street parking?
Yes.
What if there isn't that, what if there aren't that many spaces available on this property?
So, the applicant has an opportunity to provide justification of why they cannot provide the required number of spaces to the commission, and they can consider that as a waiver, under the jurisdiction of the special permit.
Right, okay.
Which, in effect, you've said orally, that there's space in the neighborhood, but Steve alluded to the fact, do you have anything in writing that says you can use the former rail station space?
Well, if, if need be, I will obtain that. If you look directly across from the front door of my building, it is, it's off-street parking. It's just as if you were to park on the side of the, the city hall here. We're not blocking any doorways, there would not be any obstruction of, of traffic flow. It's parking as you would park on any other street, which is...
You mean the on-street parking?
Excuse me, excuse me, on-street parking.
I can see a little lot, a little bit further down the street.
Right, correct.
Right across, it would just, well, there's no curb, but if there were a curb, it would be on-street curb-side parking. Okay.
Okay, I didn't mean to monopolize. Questions for the applicants? Additional questions for the applicants?
Again, my thanks back to staff, which you've asked about. Since we're on the record here, historically, if we have a business owner who needs to do a justification for fewer spots than the square footage requires, normally do we, does the staff normally ask for something in writing, to say that there is some relationship to secure parking, or that there's something in the neighborhood that says this is, after all, that this would be okay?
If, if the commission is going to consider, and the applicant is going to propose other off-street parking on another property, it has to be under their legal possession, either through ownership or a signed lease agreement.
And that's what we had, I'm, I'm recalling the student housing projects, where they showed they had a lease for spaces on somebody else's property, so, okay. No, I have, I have another question, but if there's more, if there's more parking, go ahead while I find...
Anything related to parking, or we'll move on to another topic? Okay.
So your request, I'm sorry, can I jump in?
Oh, yeah, everyone's...
So you're requesting essentially three waivers. One is the parking with, which we've been discussing. The second is for signage. You're proposing a different type of sign, two different types of signs, rather than the two types that are allowed, but for less square footage. And then you need a waiver to have live or electronically amplified entertainment within three hundred feet of a special zone, of a residential zoning district, which I think is self-evident based on the map, but somewhere in here...
Stage.
Something about the stage. And I'm wondering if you can address how you are going to deal with that, of course, I'm not finding it.
It's in the comments from DP Diller or something.
Half notes.
We were somewhat surprised to find out that was an issue, because one of the prior businesses had a stage on that property. When it was the old Parocca Elite, they did have a stage on there. I didn't anticipate that putting a small platform up would be a sticking point.
I've got it in Jeff's, but I think it was somewhere else as well. Yes, can't speak to a previous use, and whether or not they were in compliance. But there is a process to deal with it, it's just not with us, it's with the Board of Zoning Appeals. So it sounds like you haven't started that process, if you want to maintain the stage.
Okay.
Is that correct, Steph, that if she wants to maintain the stage, they have to go to the BZA, as I'm reading Jeff's?
Jeff's recommended that we pull the stage out of this process and circle back to try to bring it back in.
So, so either way, though, those are the two options. Yes, no?
Yes, this board does not have the authority to waive that.
Okay.
Possible. Could we get a little clarification on the issues with the stage? Is that in your capacity or...
It, it basically says that a stage is not allowed by a particular Part C, Section 4, Article 2, eight-point-one, blah, blah, blah.
We're just curious why.
Yeah, yeah, we're just, I mean, it's...
But why?
But even as citizens that are, you know, just part of the community, like, if I was to go into an establishment, I, I don't understand why that would be potential issue. And that's kind of the, some of the things we've experienced with the process, I've been kind of flabbergasted, actually, on how some...
Well, good news is, that the city is in the process of revising the zoning ordinance, so maybe, maybe this might be addressed.
This might be a...
I don't know if you know any historic reasoning behind this. I'm assuming that the presence, presence of a stage might suggest bigger, louder, more involved live entertainment, and that might be the connection.
But that's the issue, though, okay.
It's just not a big enough place.
Don't, for sure, I'm just guessing that, that the presence of a stage might suggest a more intense land use.
And it's also the permanency of it, the structural accommodation.
There you go. So both of those things, perhaps.
What if it is a temporary stage, which was put up for performances, would that matter?
No, it's a structural accommodation.
Okay.
So then I have a question to our staff. So with regard to the third waiver, which deals with live performances, amplified, whatever the whole sentence is there, I also noticed, Jeff, in your comments, that anything that we might do with regard to the waiver would still be predicated on whether the stage issue is pursued with the, would, could be impacted by any action that would go before the BZA? Possibly.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
If we were to act on the waiver, and grant it, let's say...
That the waiver for the distance...
For the stage, for the distance. But it's distance for live entertainment, which presumably might need a stage, they still need to resolve that, we're not doing that for them.
Correct, they could, they could pursue the live entertainment without a stage.
Correct. Got it.
If you grant the third waiver.
Right, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I guess I need clarification. So who, who grants the waiver for the entertainment?
The Planning Commission.
You can.
You guys are the Planning Commission.
But not for the stage.
Not for the stage. The stage, again, comes through with...
The Board Zoning.
The Board Zoning, okay. This is not Board Zoning, this is the planning. Okay, this is, the vision comes in, right? So I'm trying to, trying to follow what that's saying.
And hopefully, and hopefully we're working on it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Additional questions?
I do want to just go, go, one more, back to the parking. So, in looking at this in plan view, on the air photo, to the east of the building is a separate lot. So that is not readily, even though you may own it, it's not readily available for the parking for this use, because it is not part of the property in question. It's a completely separate lot.
It is a, it is a completely separate lot, it is a different address.
Okay.
And, and I would think as being the owner, it is my home, that I would have the discretion to, to be able to use the property.
Not, not, I'm not questioning that, I'm just making it clear that the property that the building sits on...
Is not the same, it's a lot of the property.
Right, right. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward.
I'm Andrea Wondersey with the Northeast Holly Development Association, 101 Gertrude Street. NEDA definitely supports this application. We think it's a great addition to the neighborhood. We think the business is going to enhance the cultural options in the Triangle area. We do not have any concerns about the parking situation. There's a lot of on-street parking. Nothing else is gonna happen in this area that's going to infringe upon, or this would infringe upon, those activities. I'd also like to add that Mike, and Julie, and Jim are all really great community citizens. They're involved in the Neighborhood Association, they know their neighbors, they talk to their neighbors, and they include their neighbors in, in their plans and let them know what's going on. There's a lot of support for this. Julie is a really talented and successful businesswoman. She's very creative, I've known her for almost ten years, and I've watched her do a lot of different fun things, and we're really excited to, to see her talents at work in, in the Holly Green neighborhood. So they have our support here. I'll look forward to coming to the next meeting about the stage, if that's required for zoning. And so, so we give a lot of strong support for this.
Thank you.
Could I just ask this speaker a question?
Oh, please.
Was this project raised when the neighborhood grew?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, so, so you'll have to forgive me a little bit, 'cause I got this from Mike LaFleur. I'm the new interim executive director of NEDA, and Mike left on Friday, and this is clearly my first meeting. You guys brought this up to the Neighborhood Association, right? Mike, I think you guys were talking about...
If need be, you can certainly get a letter from Mike LaFleur, or anybody else in the neighborhood, Sydney, Amora, and Lacy's.
We've had a lot of support coming out of neighborhood businesses as well.
I've, I've been in there for five years, this is a very daunting project.
I mean, Mike verbally told me everything I just said, so this was all coming right from Mike.
Welcome, I understood.
Well, thank you. But, yeah, I don't, I don't know if you had a formal meeting or not.
An actual formal meeting?
Like with the Neighborhood Association.
On record, no. Several informal discussions.
Thank you.
Other individuals who might want to speak in favor of this application, please come Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? If so, please come forward. We have no additional speakers, so we'll declare this hearing closed and move to our next hearing.
The next public hearing is three S, eighteen twenty-three, this is a three-mile-limit subdivision review in the town of Clay, JGB Properties Subdivision. This is to realign three properties into three new lots at forty-eight fifty-five and forty-eight seventy-five Executive Drive, and also seventy-one forty Henry Clay Boulevard, JCB Factoring, GM BH LLC, and FGT Realty LLC are the owners and applicants.
If the applicant is here, or their representative, please come forward. I don't think that's you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. So as is often the case with our three-mile-limit applications, there aren't a lot of speakers, and I'll just ask at this point if the application is complete, and if that's the case, we'll declare the hearing closed and move to our next hearing.
Next public hearing is three S, eighteen twenty-four, this is also a three-mile-limit subdivision review in the town of DeWitt. The Nottingham re-subdivision is the name, and this is to combine two properties into one new lot at thirteen oh-one Nottingham Road and Jamesville Road. The Nottingham Retirement Community, Inc. is the owner and applicant.
And I think I know the answer to these three questions I'm gonna ask, if the applicant is here, please come forward, or the applicant's representative to present the case. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. And seeing none of those, are there individuals who would like to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward. So again, a three-mile-limit case, not unexpected, given the simplicity and directness of the case, is this application complete from a staff perspective? Okay, so we'll declare the hearing closed. We have several additional items of business, but we'll get to those later, and first we will start with the public hearings from this evening, and work through those to see if there is consensus for action, I'm trying to take one out of order, should we?
Sure.
I, I'd like to deviate from protocol a little bit, we have exactly one person in the public, in the audience from the public this evening, who was also associated with one of the hearings we held tonight, so in light of your endurance and staying here this long, we could maybe look first at that particular case, R- eighteen dash thirty-nine, the proposed re-subdivision on South Salina Street, to see if there is support for a motion on this application one way or the other.
Move to approve the negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Re-subdivision is approved, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our business if you wish.
You too.
Thank you very much. So now we'll return to the beginning of this list, and that will be, the first one would be SP-ninety-six dash thirteen M one, the proposed special permit modification for the restaurant, restaurant on the fifteen hundred block of South Salina Street. Motion, discussion?
Just a quick discussion item, so of the three signs that are left on the building, wall signs, excuse me, wall signs, it appears that the discrepancy in square footage is is related primarily, I think he, I keep, I keep saying the Colonel's mug, which I find entertaining, but the one that's his face on that corner piece.
And the background.
And, and the background, so you included the background, they kept referring it as painting the building, so that's really the discrepancy, but the face part appears to be more or less the same size as the face that's up there now, based on what I was trying to scale on my iPad. So I'm just saying you, telling you all that, I was trying to scale it, so I think that the size of his face is more or less the same.
And that's why he thought it.
That's why he thinks it's basically the same, because he was not counting the stripes as part of the sign, but as part of just repainting the building.
And part of the discussion, since we're in the discussion part, since he wasn't here for round one.
Yes.
The way I could really say it, the other gentlemen kept talking about their design toward the, you know, product they sell, and so we're looking at the stripes for the bucket, so to speak, and saying, okay, this is the entire sign.
Right.
He's focusing on the face of the character.
Right, and I forgot about the bucket discussion, you're right, I, thank you, Walter, I forgot about that.
So I believe that that's why this relief measure, so to speak, is not understanding, we're looking at the entire frame of the picture, and he's just thinking, well, why aren't you just measuring the Colonel's crown to chin? But it seems it really isn't the same size on the tower. Everybody agreed that at least in concept, that's what we, we think is going on.
Yes.
That's exactly it. Question for Madam Legal Counsel, can you comment on the extent to which other issues, different, but perhaps interrelated issues, come to the forefront, such as the questions of.
Fence.
Fence, and, right, and did this one have, what's the term, citations from code enforcement violations issued? Those were mentioned, and they may all be true, can you guide us on what ex, to what extent those issues and factors should be part of our deliberations for this?
Those do all fall under jurisdiction of, the division of code enforcement, so they would be the ones to write the citation. I imagine for the renovation, I would hope that a bad fence would be replaced or gotten rid of. But those issues are code enforcement.
Okay. I suspected as much, but I appreciate the clarification again.
I know the commission is in deliberation about this, but I'm gonna make the motion, you know, with a comment, and then see if there's a second. So I'll move to approve of the negative declaration for the purposes of our discussion, but I'm seeing a parallel here with another convenience market discussion we had with another member of the common council. I'm remembering another meeting or two where there were neighbors who were concerned about the condition, that would happen, you know, what would happen to the neighborhood if these.
Wait, wait, this is still, we're still on.
KFC.
KFC.
We're on KFC.
Yes.
And I'm, but I'm remembering another, a convenience store that.
Not from tonight, but back.
Not from tonight, from another meeting, where they expanded to include hot food, so I'm seeing a parallel with that restaurant issue. You know, how do they take care of the property in a small space? And since we have a neighbor who's come in and said this space is directly impacted by how this property is taken care of, I'm making the motion to approve, but I'm also thinking we should, might want to put something in a resolution about this new management, supposedly they're, they're taking the franchise or out of this, and now the new management's coming in to make these improvements. Maybe something we could leave for code enforcement to consider, you know, in resolution.
So how would you do that? I mean, what, what, how, how is that part of your motion? How are you saying that then?
In NEB's, I make this, you know, I'll turn to staff. I understand enforcement belongs to code enforcement, but if we're granting an approval, our approval normally carries where the people have to maintain their driveways a certain way, they've got to be a certain width in the city. So what we're saying is, you know, again, granting it with all the responsibilities that go along with the ability to make the improvements.
And doesn't the existing fence, isn't it necessary for one of our screening requirements? Aha.
So if it's into our.
So if they're gonna use the existing fence to meet one of their requirements, then they have to, it has to be in good, it has to exist on their own property, and it has to be in good repair, so we could just note, we have concern that we need verification of that.
And just for reassurance for the commission, in every special permit resolution, we have a be it further resolved statement that says the application is approved subject to compliance with the following conditions, and the first one always is that the subject premise shall be used, operated, and maintained in a neat and orderly condition at all times, all outside storage of junk, bottles, cartons, boxes, debris, and the like shall be restricted to appropriately screened enclosures not visible to the general public.
But in this particular case, since that, the fence that was brought up is being pushed onto the neighbor's property and not standing, since it's required for one of our, um, deep, for one of, since it's one of our requirements, there we go, could Walter's motion not say we are approving it with, subject to that specific screening device being documented as in place and in good condition? Because before, remember when the first person came, he wasn't quite sure if he had all the screening that was necessary, but he said, but I'll do it, so couldn't, couldn't we just be reinforcing that with our, with our motion to make sure that it really is still standing?
Yes, if it's on the site plan, it's on the piece of legislation that is.
Okay.
That is part of the.
Okay. So does that, does that get to your point then, about that one?
Right, and since, since they didn't ask for a waiver from the screening requirement, they're required to maintain it.
Right, right, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so with all of that, I would second the motion.
Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So that is approved. So we're now at R- eighteen dash thirty-five, the proposed re-subdivision for Merriman Avenue. The applicant was here this time, we had no additional speakers, is there a motion on this re-subdivision?
I move approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That too is approved, we are now at R- eighteen dash thirty-seven, the Gertrude Street re-subdivision.
I move approval with a negative declaration.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The next one, item four, we already approved, R- eighteen dash thirty-nine on South Salina Street. We move now to the re-subdivision on Mosley Drive, R- eighteen dash forty-two.
Move to approve of the negative declaration. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Next is the re-subdivision on, oh, we, R- eighteen dash forty-three, we're holding open.
Can I ask a point of clarification for that? If project site review is required, there's, there is not a required sequence of when they get the subdivision versus when they get project site review, or do they happen in tandem?
We got indicated that they were doing any exterior alterations, they would need a project site review.
Does just painting the facade trigger that?
Exterior alteration.
So just, just changing the color would have triggered that? Okay.
I have a different question about the same thing. On the, it's been several years since convenience stores have been under fire, and the city has said that they were going to have some sort of policy, maybe, I don't, I don't, do does the city have a policy about doing something special to make sure people behave at, um, convenience stores?
I'm not aware of a recent resolution, you're thinking it was a, a recent action by the council?
No, I'm asking if they have done, that, if the city has done something like that, because it, it was maybe eighteen months ago, there was a lot of newspaper.
There was some discussion about.
People on council, and I don't know, the mayor, you know.
Yeah, I don't remember who would, would have taken action, but there was discussion about grappling with the issues that seem to be related to convenience stores.
I can do some research as to what the outcome of that was, and perhaps send, send you guys a memo or something to see if, if there was some recent action on that, I'm not familiar with anything, but I will look into it.
Yeah, I thought there was some action, this is where memory fades, and so there's a vague notion that there was some action on the part of the city in terms of maybe closing some really difficult convenience stores, and I don't know if there was a new ordinance from the council that, that became the vehicle for accomplishing that, or an interpretation of some kind of a nuisance ordinance already in place that leveraged that, but, and by recent, that could be two years ago or three years ago.
We do have, the city does have the certificate of use license that's required, and that's based on a point system.
Okay.
I'm not that familiar with it, to speak intelligently about it, but I do know that that is a mechanism for certain establishments that.
Yeah, maybe that's what we're all kind of thinking of in different pieces, but we don't have the whole picture in front of us, so.
But, but they'll be coming back in any event, th, this, this applicant will be coming back because we've held this open now, and possibly also for our project site review as well, okay?
That will take care of things.
So we'll continue to hold this, we now look at the special permit modification on Burnett Ave, SP-oh-five-twenty-two M one, the last presentation we had from an applicant this evening, I believe, with three waivers needed.
Yes, I neglected to ask about, so I'm asking you guys about the projecting sign, sixteen feet.
Sixteen? Oh, I didn't think.
Six.
It's double-sided, I think, isn't it, eight each side?
Yes, I thought it was smaller.
Is this, is this the one where the Landmark Preservation Board weighed in regarding the sign? One of the, one of the cases this, tonight, I thought did, and it said they were okay, but I don't remember seeing anything in the packet, or did I?
Sorry.
Pick that up.
I don't remember that, I called you. Nope, I don't see it. I thought it was.
That one of these cases had reference to the Preservation Board weighing in, but I didn't see the, the letter.
Transportation planner, I guess, made that.
Oh, okay.
So the eastern parking area is that lot that the building does not sit on, so it's, even though the same owner controls both properties, he's not offering it up to be a parking lot for the property with the building on it, and he's also not offering the back of the lot because that's parking for the residential tenants.
That's what he's saying.
That's what he's saying. So Neil's concerns are about the asphalt in the right of way, and the lack of control for access to the residential parking. He says the, the.
Bless you.
Actually, bless you, bless you. If the western, western parking lot is not for parking, it should incorporate physical barriers with the property lines to prevent customers from entering, so he's saying, basically, if it's just for the residents, he's, he should do something to create a control point on the west side of the building. he's, he should do something to create a control point on the west side of the building. And I still can't find the size of the sign. I was looking in.
It's, it is, it is two by four.
There.
Two sides.
Okay.
You want to ask for that before?
I would, I would make a motion approving the application with a negative declaration, granting the waivers on the condition that the transportation planners' concerns about the right of way are resolved. So getting rid of the paving in front of the building and providing a control, a traffic control on the western side of the building so that the backyard doesn't become de facto a parking lot and create a pedestrian vehicular conflict at the street. I'm, I'm recommending waiving the parking based on availability on the street, but also on the neighborhood organizations' comments about available parking.
Second?
Further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That special permit modification is approved. We now have the Town of Clay Three Mile Limit Case 3S-18-23. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval with a negative declaration.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We're now looking at the Town of DeWitt Three Mile Limit Case 3S-18-24. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval with a negative declaration.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Excuse me. The Three Mile Limit Case in DeWitt is approved. We have no minor modifications for our agenda this evening. So we move on to modification consideration.
Wait, wait, wait. Don't you have a minor modification? Did it get pulled?
It's P-1618M2.
Did you print an earlier version?
Apparently so. Now you see it, now you don't. Or I should say, now you don't see it, now you do.
That one right there.
A error. So we have one minor modification for this evening, SP-16-18M2. To modify ours for the project in the 1200 block of East Tennessee Street, the studio apartments that were approved not long ago. I'm a little unfamiliar with this. Could you, someone give us an overview? It's a minor modification, so it's apparently not a significant deviation from what was originally approved?
Yes, an attorney representing the property owner sent in a letter. The, the coffee shop, the restaurant that's on the first floor
Right.
wants to open earlier.
Oh.
An hour earlier. And so.
What's the new hour?
Six AM.
Okay.
Instead of seven AM.
Should go for it. They have coffee.
The customer arrived and the coffee line was.
Okay, and that's probably so. And that's the only change in hours?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds pretty straightforward. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval with a negative declaration.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That is approved. I will tread lightly here. I think that's it for our minor modifications today? Okay. Now we move to modification consideration. I have just one item under this category and that is the project that we worked on and approved the second meeting in August for the eight hundred, eighteen hundred block of West Fayette Street. And what is before us now is a modification that deals with the ground sign.
Yes, so the commission had advised the applicant. Let me back up. The commission did not approve the waiver of the ground.
Ground sign in the last.
The area.
Thank you.
Double sided ground sign. They had advised the applicant to reduce the signage and they have reduced it to fifty square feet in overall area. And the previous was seventy-four square feet.
So reduction of about a third.
Lowered the height.
Lowered the height from ninety-six inches to eighty-three. It's under this category to, for you to consider whether or not it's a substantial modification, whether or not it warrants a hearing.
I don't feel it's a fairly modest change to a very large project is well within what the public looked at before.
Usually I think of major modifications in terms of something that would have greater impact on the neighborhood. This seems like it's going in the other direction, would have a smaller, lesser impact. So if that's the feeling that a public hearing is not warranted, is there a motion? One or the other on this special permit modification?
Move to approve with a negative declaration.
Second?
Discussion. All.
I would just say that we should thank the applicant for working with staff to make this change.
Further discussion or comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? We are now under.
There is a number two and the other is number two.
The second modification consideration. Is special permit for a restaurant and this is also with respect to signage. They are modifying the site plan, the floor plan, elevation and signage for McDonald's at four sixteen to four twenty-two Grant Boulevard.
So this is a.
It is in this category because the wall, the signage necessitates an expanded waiver to allow two thirty-three square foot wall signs and two eighteen point four square foot ground signs. It does reduce the overall signage from seventeen signs to nine and reduces the square footage from thirty, three hundred forty-four to three hundred and thirteen.
But there's going to be an additional ground sign.
Yes, a small one.
And so the question again here is whether or not this warrants a public hearing.
Whether or not substantial.
Mm-hmm.
What's the sense of the group? And the joint.
Just to give you a perspective, it's in the Shop City Plaza.
Right. So everything, uh, west, north, and so forth is part of the Shop City complex, and across the street is the cemetery? Cross Teal?
Yes.
Cross Teal, yes.
Yes.
Or Grand.
Going with your theory, that again, there's, in a sense, it's beneficial because it's a reduction, not an expansion on the signage. Did I see something, maybe I'm mixing this up with another project, about some ADA compliance? Am I thinking of another restaurant?
Yes, they're remodeling the interior to facilitate some ADA improvements.
Okay, and that's all.
And decor. Yeah.
This is just much like with the KFC, this is also just a new corporate, the newest corporate aesthetic that they're putting into play here. So the, the big red and yellow motif that was popular for the last, I don't know how many years, is now this gray subdued motif.
On page one seventy-three, there's a, a project narrative that they submitted to us that might be helpful.
And I'm obviously reading again my brain, says this, comparing this to an earlier meeting where another KFC, another McDonald's franchise took work outside and had to make changes to the parking lot and to the surrounding curves and the surrounding sidewalk. This is, this seems minor. This really does seem like a minor modification because of where the restaurant sits.
Located off the street, yeah.
And it doesn't seem to be having any impact beyond the property.
Right.
Whereas you're right, the last one impacted the public sidewalk and all those things.
The project narrative, this is page eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I think we could deal with that.
No changes to parking spaces, that's right. Seems to be all good, I'm saying.
It, it would seem to me that we might not need a public hearing in this particular case. Given the scope of what they're proposing and the specific location. I don't, do I, I just can do, I move to approve with a negative declaration.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So that modification is approved. Now we shift to old business and we have a couple of items left over from our August twenty-seventh meeting. The first being SP-15-15 for a project in the three hundred block of West Kirkpatrick Street. And there was a potential error identified at the last meeting that was subsequently confirmed as an error and it's been corrected in our material for this evening. Are there any other outstanding issues with regard to this particular time extension request?
No.
And is there anyone here tonight to speak to that? Is that your? Nope, okay.
So they're looking for just one year?
September twenty-first of two thousand nineteen.
And that will be the third time we will have done this? Yes. I move approval. Do I have to do a negative declaration? No, not, because it's the whole issue. I move approval for the extension.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? And then a very similar request for SP-15-16, same address, but the rear of the property, same applicant, same request, same number of requests.
Same motion.
Okay. From Chris, a motion to approve.
Second?
Discussion on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? And now we move to.
Before we move on, so I just have one concern. This will be the third time we've extended this. Do we have any policy regarding how many times we just?
I am not aware of one.
It's up to the discretion of the commission.
So at this point, next September, it will be three, how many years since, with the original approval at that point?
Uh, two thousand fifteen was the original.
So it will be four, four years? Okay.
If there is a fourth request, that might be a good time to have the applicant come in and have.
Also, Heather, I don't remember because I've purged it from my mind momentarily, but in the new zoning ordinance, do we have anything about extensions and how many?
No, because it's, well, not that I am aware, but I will double check.
I'm just thinking if, now would be the time maybe to say that after so many or after a total of X number of years, you get to start all over?
I will double check for sure.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And I have to admit, no matter how many hours I spent on that, I don't remember seeing it, so.
So new business, we have a couple of items here?
Yep, this is a notice of intent to act as lead agency under Seeker. I have a request from the Syracuse Industrial Development Agency to be lead agency for a, a project that. All right, so the project is sponsored by RPS Hotel Holdings LLC and it consists of redeveloping forty-three thousand square feet of property on Prospect Avenue, four oh one, four oh three, four oh five, four oh seven, four oh nine, four eleven through four thirteen. The scope of work includes demolition of five existing buildings, constructing a hundred and thirty-three square foot five-story mixed-use building. And that will contain a hotel, dwelling units, and a parking structure. There will also be a skybridge from the parking structure to the hospital. At this point, this board is just considering that CIDA be lead agency and so we have to answer them within thirty days. This board, as well as the Board of Zoning Appeals, may have a role in this project, so that's why they're, they're asking.
So. So this just requires an affirmative action from this body to acquiesce to that request? Okay.
You don't have to consent for them to be lead agency, but.
Is it better to be on the?
They would be doing Seeker if you did.
Okay, so do we want to motion to that effect?
See, I'm just curious, there's a long form in here, so, right?
Oh, they have determined it's a type one action.
So are they going to do a modified EIS?
I do not know.
It would just seem it's a, it might not trip any specific threshold that would immediately throw it in, but I'm guessing it gets close to a number of thresholds? So that you have no sense of which they might be, what they might be doing?
No.
Okay. I'm not particularly dying to, for us to be lead agency, so I will make a motion supporting their request for the CIDA to be lead agency under Seeker.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. So that is approved and on the record. And an additional time extension request under new business.
This is a time extension for a sign waiver appeal. Yes, there you go, okay.
And his, it's just an issue of, he hasn't been able to buy it and put it up? Or design it?
To allow for the purchase and installation of the new sign.
And his deadline was?
December, the deadline, he would, is requesting.
But it was April.
It was April tenth, he'd like December thirty-first.
Of this year.
Of two thousand eighteen, yes.
I move to approve the requested big time extension.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Are there other items aside from the authorizations for October ninth that we need to deal with tonight?
No, only the holdover re-subdivision.
Okay. So it looks like seven new applications and one carryover, so a total of eight. Is there a motion for those authorizations? Is there a motion for those authorizations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, uh, if there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? We stand adjourned until-
Tuesday, October ninth.
The ninth of October. That's-